Doing my big battle. I'm gonna call for the Board of Supervisors, um, special call meeting along with the joint, um, well, joint courthouse planning oversight committee, just so everybody listening knows. Um, and if we could all stand toward the planning committees and our side.
The ladies and gentlemen, I am the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One nation under God. Thank you.
So, before we get too far, oh yeah, watch your name on the stick. John or somebody, uh, on Zoom, can you just confirm that you can unmute and talk and we can hear you? You can hear us?
Yes, I'll just unmute it.
Yes, perfect.
Thank you.
Perfect. Your, I'll give introduction.
Do we want to talk, I don't want to do an introduction first.
Oh, no.
Okay.
I've moved out, you adopt the agenda. One second.
Okay, one nation, a second, any questions?
I just wanted to note for the record that I always request, I didn't introduce them for this case, but I'm standing in a request for public comment during special call meetings. And I did have some people reach out to me yesterday about the inability to have public comment during this meeting. But I just wanted to note that for the record.
Thank you. All those bakers say hi?
Hi.
Any questions? Alright.
Introduction. Thank you, yeah, so, um, I think it would be very good for everybody to introduce themselves and, um, maybe start with the Board of Supervisors and then move on to the planning oversight committee.
Good, good. Debbie Donahue, Wakefield District Supervisor, Court Board Chair.
Uh, Van Carney, Stonewall, I'm representative.
Um, I'm Kier Winston, I represent the county district which includes the town of Washington on the by-study board.
I'm Donna Cammer, I'm the supervisor for Jackson District.
Chris King Smith, I'm the Piedmont District Representative on the Board of Supervisors.
Right, and planning oversight committee, our golf, golf's turn, kind of turn.
Caitlin Strunk, Department of Service.
Melissa Cott, County Court Judge.
I'm also the Department General District, if you want to listen to the latest calls.
Roger Jenkins, I'm Chief Deputy with Sheriff's Office.
Jim Plow, District Court Judge.
And I'm on the planning oversight committee as well, Gary Prairie County Administrator. The other member who's not here today is Judge Foster, General District Court Judge. So, with that, um, the Board of Supervisors had a conversation there at the last meeting. Uh, so it was an update, um, the concept. And, uh, there were a few questions that came up regarding the program for the new building for expansion. Program being what spaces are needed, uh, and how big might they need to be? And, and then, once we can figure out that, then we can move on to which spaces need to be next to other spaces and not next to other spaces and all that. Before we can really nail that, what is it that we want? How many, which types of rooms, et cetera, are needed? And during that discussion, um, the, the Board, uh, decided informally in consensus that it made sense to bring the planning oversight committee together with the Board of Supervisors. So there didn't need to be a translator in the middle, the consultant didn't need to try to interpret what you said and then package it and then share it with the Board. We can just do this all together and kind of cut out the middle man. And, um, the consultant, uh, we'll let them introduce themselves in a second, uh, can then help facilitate discussion here together and I'll, happy to help as well to try to hammer out the bigger issues, uh, decision points for the program. And then, uh, when we get that done, then they can really charge on with the rest of their, their scope. Uh, and there's a table provided in front of you that lays out some of the big issues. It's also on board notes. I think that's a good point to stop and Andrew, introduce yourself and your team. And then we can, so, um, the consultant that Gary mentioned is Bobby in the architecture.
And I'm Andrew Moore, Principal with the firm and then, uh, on this project for the team. And with me on mine, we have some other two members, um, Project Manager is, is John Stain. Some of you have met before, um, as well as Stacy Wiseman, who is the trainer. And she's the, the court's planner that's on our team and then Hannah Cooper is the project architect. So they're, uh, they're the people that really know the answers and if you have questions, I defer them upon some of the technical issues.
And, yeah, so as I say, Andrew and I, Andrew's team and, and I worked together to try to frame out what those big decision points were. We might not have captured them all, but we've at least captured these ones. And, uh, they put this table together and I think the best way to move through this meeting is to use the table and move row by row and, and have that vibrant, just, that's great. Yeah, one other, um, just sort of metaphor I wanted to use is that, um, the, the issues that we are talking about tonight are kind of the large, largish program areas that can really swing the building one way or another in terms of its overall form, size, and configuration. Clearly during the design process, there will be lots of tweaking and nuanced discussion about the various spaces. But these are ones that have come out recently in discussion that we feel like we need to, to kind of run to the ground because they have significant impact on the reform of the courthouse. Um, you kind of think about, you know, if you're filling a jar with digging, small rocks, you know, it's the big rocks that you have to put first, you know, in order to establish sort of their range that maybe you fill with smaller ones. So that's the kind of order that we have to follow. So, also, I would just want to point out that the order in this table has no error in order reports. There, there's basically no particular order. So, um, just diving in, uh, the first big space that I wanted to talk about is whether there should be a jury assembly space included for the courthouse. And by the way, let me also make one other global statement is that this is agnostic about whether we're talking about the new build option or the renovation ambition. Either, either place needs the same questions. So, uh, the first, the structure of this table, I'm sorry. Um, the Virginia Courthouse Facility Guidelines, that was something that was very important to, I think, everybody as we were seeking, uh, our architectural partner. And, um, that's the standard by which, you know, we're supposed to be pushing through this concept design, ultimate design. And it's flexible to some extent depending on the size of the community and intensity of, of, uh, use for a courthouse. The rightmost column in this table is pulling out, uh, references from those guidelines, to help facilitate that discussion and, uh, bring attention to what it says and where it says there might be flexibility. Correct. Yeah, that's, that's a great explanation. So, the jury assembly space, um, as you well, as you may be aware, um, is a space that is used for a jury trial for assembling the two jurors reported in the courtroom. And, uh, it needs to be a substantial sized room because of the number of, of, of jurors that are brought in for a jury trial. As you also may know, in this particular courthouse, um, which has operated for many years without a kind of jury assembly space, uh, there's a lot of potential for mixing, uh, qualifications and, and, you know, even having this trial because of contamination of the, of the jury pool. So, um, there's a couple of ways to look at it. If you have, let's say, a multi-courtroom courthouse, then potentially if you have, uh, if you do not have simultaneous, uh, use of those two courtrooms, one could be used for jury, jury assembly and one could be used for the actual trial. But that also eliminates the possibility of both courtrooms being used simultaneously, which is part of the built-in flexibility that we've been hearing about as desired for this new courthouse. So, um, any questions about that, um, or, or comments?
What do we do right now?
Right now, the, well, I shouldn't answer that. The clerks should answer it. What, what happens?
What do we do if jurors assemble downstairs in those open rooms? Where there also might be witnesses, other parties to other cases. And then when we bring in the jurors, we line them up in the benches over here, which of course will take up 50% of the public seating while we're selecting a jury. As they're selected, they're seated over there in jury chairs and the rest are discharged. So, the norm, for example, up in Leesburg is that your juries, I assume, would always be segregated away from any other interested parties in a trial? They, they, in Leesburg, they come in and they go to the jury management area where they're staffed there. And it's probably, seating area is probably twice the size of this room. We have, we have, I mean, there's five jury capable courtrooms up there, four, four jury capable courtrooms. If you don't count the whole courthouse. And they are escorted by deputies to the courtroom, um, in different pools as they, um, as they require. And they sit in the jury box or possibly they're going to go up to like we do here. So, considering what we have here right now, um, and just this concept of, uh, what are we calling a jury gathering?
Assembly of jurors.
What, now stepping away from Leesburg and thinking about Rappahanna County or your experience here and the look and feel of our community, what do you think we need? What do you think would be more than adequate but not overkill? I think it's, it's, and architects will probably speak to, uh, the cost of doing this now versus later versus downsides, they have, um, 800 square feet, but I'll, I'll, example I'll use also is Falkir County because it's also part of the circuit where we sit. They don't have a jury assembly area there. And we need one. And when we, it's very difficult, if not impossible, to operate two courtrooms there. And frequently, we need to operate two courtrooms there. On criminal days, certain criminal days, we have two dockets going. But sometimes we have jur, uh, a jury that'll spill over for multiple days. And there's no assembly area for them to report in the morning. So, on day two of a jury in, in Leesburg, the jurors would come in in the morning, report at 8:30 or 9:00, and they'd go to the jury assembly area and wait till they're brought to the deliberation room or courtroom when they're needed. In Falkir, we, we can't operate, we can't have two juries because we use the second. And we've had this come up before. We can't, because they're using the second courtroom as the jury assembly area, which shuts down that courtroom. Um, it, it really ties your hands. And I think when you're talking about building a facility here, you're not looking about really what all, our, all of our individual experiences are. With Rappahannock County or Falkir or Loudoun. In our lifetimes, we're looking, I mean, how old is this courthouse? Almost 200 years old, it's probably past its, its prime. But I look at Falkir, it's 50 years old and it's at least 10 years past its prime.
Yeah.
It just, it just wasn't, it wasn't done well.
So the numbers, as I said, it's about 40, uh, citizens called to be in the jury pool that need to go somewhere. And then, then that group is, goes through the process to decide who gets to sit over there. And it's where do you put 40 people on a day when, you know, court is also happening for other people have been told to come to the courthouse? And, and you're, you're not mixing those 40 people with all the other people. After that jury is selected and you're down to 12, for however many, it gets more management to, to store those 12 people as segregated. But when you've got the 40, it's, I think, probably tricky and it's still the more.
And the, the interesting thing about Rappahannock, I think, or let's just say large jurisdictions and small jurisdictions, when I sit in for a jury in Loudoun and I have a felony case and I need 20 people to ultimately pull from, we may have only put 25 or 30 in the box because you have, um, 400,000 people there and nobody knows each other.
Everybody's.
Although, it has happened. Here, when you get a jury pool, a lot of people know everybody. Because you're pulling from a smaller pool, so you actually have to bring in more jurors because more get eliminated.
And I think it was this year where you had.
I sat, I was.
You all, I was in, I was on.
Did you all?
I think one or two people. But yeah, we were dismissed as an insufficient jury pool. And this place, it was full. And we were crammed downstairs for 45 minutes and 45 minutes.
That's the nature, the sort of the, the beauty. Living in a small community that everyone knows each other, but when you try to select and impart, you know, people with no connections, then you, you run into that obstacle.
Wasn't that related to reporting more that other people knowing each other? Oh, no. I was there, Mary Graham was there, Dr. Hill was there, I'm a former lawyer as well.
People know, people know, people know. Mr. Luke, I'm sure he branded that new service. Caitlin, was that 50? Did you subpoena 50?
Actually, that time I only called 30 and that's why I increased the number to 40. So now that's why.
50, 50 is not unusual.
No, if it's a high profile case, I would call it even more.
And I recall there were times when there were issue of cases to find out why exactly did you decide not to show it?
Yeah.
You also, you always get a little bit of, well, call it attrition, I guess. You four, you subpoena 40 people and 34 show up, so you'll sort of shoot over your target. Because there's, people don't get it, they're out of town, they didn't see it, it's just. And on the, you made a point in passing about, uh, two simultaneous jury trials. And I don't know if it's a question for you, for our, how often, or Caitlin, or, um, but how often do we get into a situation where, in Rappahannock County, where, where with an ideal facility, we would actually want to have two simultaneous jury trials? Well, it's a matter of just having the flexibility to do it. We can do it now. So, it ever comes up, yeah. We have three courts operating on this, so we have to, we have to coordinate with J and D R schedule, just district court schedule. So we have very limited windows when we can set trials on certain days of the month. And I think it was the last time I was here, we started setting trials, not necessarily, um, not necessarily jury trials, but they're trial days. So whether it's a jury or a bench trial, we were setting them out in March or April, I think.
Oh, we're into July now.
July, it is for available dates. So, we're very restricted by the number of days we even have available to us. And I just, for, for some routine things, I don't, some attorney from Loudoun come here and say, July, that sounds great. Because we're setting divorce cases out in 2026 right now out there, which it's, it's a much worse situation, depending on the number of days it is. But, um, yeah, I, I would hate to have people not have access to the courts because we don't have any days.
So just to be, I guess the, the main decision points here are, are completely separate jury assembly space. Have jury assembly in a second courtroom, recognizing it wouldn't be available for any time point. Not a jury, couldn't be for a jury court, couldn't be for a general district or J and D R during that time. And then, or the guidelines talk about potentially having one of your jury deliberation rooms oversized. To, anytime you have a jury capable courtroom, you must have a jury deliberation room where that jury is sequestered away from the world so they can do their hard work. And so that room could be made large enough to accommodate the 40, as opposed to only, you know, the 12 or however many.
Well, what they do in Page is they, they, they do use the jury assembly room, which is half full of an I R A of 60. They're kind of packed in there like sardines at 60, but that's not typical of an I R A. And, but they also use that same room as the jury deliberation room. Uh, it's got a big long table with chairs and it's right behind Justice Chambers. And they are, they come in a separate entrance and they, uh, are segregated, they don't intermix with the, the, all the people waiting in the, the front part, which is the, you know, the foyer, the anting room, who are either witnesses, parties, or relatives, what have you. So, and that, the dual use, I think, makes sense. And that, that's a jurisdiction that's way busier than William. Uh, it wasn't unusual for me to have, when I was Assistant C A over there, you know, 7, 700 cases a year in Page County, whereas here, I might get, um, 170, you know, of felony cases. And that's in a, that's in a hot year.
Yeah, that sounds cool.
And so the, the idea that you would have simultaneous jury pools, well, it's hard enough for us to get a benign rate of 40 here, let alone a benign rate of 80. To actually get a jury, uh, two jury trials running at the same time. I just would think that that would be a blue moon situation. Uh, even if the population jumped to the level of Page, I only saw two jury trials going on and there's two jury capable trial courtrooms in Page. I only saw that, that I can remember twice in all the years that I was over there, which is more than a decade.
And that, that's an important point, or I think, is understood by everybody, is that clearly we're not designing a new multi-million dollar building for today. And then finding out that we just fit today and then tomorrow it's undersized and we have a problem. We want to build a program for the future. Or at minimum, make sure it's, has a pre-planned pathway to expansion that just fits and is all, you know, we know that the West Wing goes over there when we hit whatever metrics.
Also, do you remember one thing? This building, even though it's 200 years old, isn't going anywhere.
Yeah.
So, we got a second, fully jury capable courtroom, okay?
Depends on what the Board does with it.
Yeah, I mean, I would really be reluctant. You've got ADA issue, ADA issues, you've got security issues, I mean, there's a whole host of issues with the facility that's built in 1834, trying to adapt it to today and tomorrow and 20 years and 50 years from now. I mean, I think the community would want to have a, a building that they're proud of, a building that's going to last for generations when nobody in this room is going to be around. And you don't want people to look back and say, what were they thinking? Why didn't they do this? You know, it's, you know, the, the only thing, the only mark that, that any of us will have on this building is maybe a few of your names will be on a plaque on the wall and that's going to be it. And, uh, I think it's just something that you want to, if you, a courthouse, it always historically has been the center of the community where people gather and I think it's, it's a place you want to be proud of. The, the dual use concept is appealing. I guess I, I keep coming back to this idea of not wanting to engage in overkill, just thinking about our community, but also recognizing, uh, as Judge Paul said, we have to think ahead and where we're going to end up, um, like oversized, oversized jury deliberation rooms. That, because you're, you're never going to have a jury deliberating and then trying to panel another jury simultaneously for the same courtroom, correct? I mean, certainly if you have two courtrooms, you have a lot more flexibility. Yeah. In the, in, in not having to coordinate with the other courts. Okay, I, yeah, I, do I foresee in my lifetime having two juries going here at once? Probably not, but I have no idea. You all, I mean, they're better, what the demographics and the growth are of the surrounding jurisdictions, which are, are going to greatly impact you as well. I can't just look at Rappahannock County. And we had their, at least Cole Pepper in Falkir, blowing up populated house.
If we have, um, two courtrooms versus one, you automatically need a second assembly for the second courtroom as well, or can you?
I wouldn't think so.
Okay.
So the concept, uh, that was, uh, the current preliminary concept, which I did attach to board docs, uh, was shown on the screen at the last meeting. Showed, had one assembly room and then two, I guess, regular sized deliberation rooms. And a deliberation room that includes, uh, captive restrooms and whatnot, so that, just like back here. So that those jurors can really be sequestered back there and not have to come in contact with or allowed to come in contact with anybody else. I don't know about whether you could have just one big jury deliberation room and one's regular size. I don't know if that works, uh, logistically.
Yeah, I think, I think the functionally, um, um, the, the only limitation you would have would be that you couldn't have, you know, if you had an ongoing trial happening in the courtroom where the jury was, um, present, you couldn't bring in a second pool to, to start a trial in the other courtroom. The only way you could do that would be if you have a separate jury deliberation, um, you know, for each courtroom and then, and then separate jury assembly. That's sort of, sort of maximum flexibility, I think.
Um, Stacy, do you want to chime in on any of this? Do you have any perspective that would add, um, color?
Uh, no, I, I think that the comments have been, uh, have been accurate and, uh, I don't have anything else to add at this time.
Do you see any complications with having the dual purpose jury deliberation room? That it would be for both a jury assembly and jury deliberation?
I think the only thing to test is the, the size of what that jury deliberation would be in order to accommodate the 40 or 50 people. It, it will, I think, grow to the, the size or close to the size of the jury assembly that we're looking at, so.
So the net saving, the net savings would be elimination of a jury deliberation room in the normal size and then adding one jury assembly, right? That's.
Correct. And then usually the, the other aspect to keep in mind is that the jury deliberation, as was described earlier, is in that staff secure corridor, whereas typically we place jury assembly off the public corridor. So there's a little, a little bit more of the operation and directing of potential jurors to the space that they need to go for jury assembly. If it was in this larger jury deliberation, you know, there's just more instruction and escorting and movement to get them back in that staff restricted corridor. That's the only minor implication to consider.
Right. Well, yeah, we have planned around, um, in Charlotte County, for example, we had access to the jury assembly, I mean, the jury deliberation from the public corridor and the staff side. So you could sometimes do both. But it, it, it limits the planning options for the, you know, it's just a puzzle to solve.
Um, and the other aspect of some of this is, the reason why we're debating some of these things is cost, right? Ultimately, there's, there's, what do we need in what works best to deliver justice? And then what is the cost for the citizens that are going to have to pay the, the bond over the next 30 years, 20 years, or whatever it is? And so, important also in making some of these decisions, it's not that, you know, it's not that there's an extra million dollars on the project today. What is the differential debt service that the, the citizens would have to bear over time? And are, you know, are we talking about pennies over some of these decisions? Or is it really big money? And, um, you know, that's, those are, there's, there's a lot of crystal ball to go with that because we're very early in the project and I think we talked a little bit about $600 per foot. Who knows, right? You're real earthy. Huh?
Far off the floor.
Far off the floor?
Yeah.
So, before you comply with it or not, you know, mahogany. And so, I, I tried to, uh, put together just some expectations of what, what does that mean? And, um, debt service is, for a 30-year bond, is about $58,000 per million. Okay? For 30 years, it's about $74,000 per million for a 20-year. This asset is a long asset. So, financial, we'll have to decide whether we want to go for a 20-year bond or a 30-year bond. It's going to be based on what it, what it backs into for cost. And so you can ultimately back those into pennies on the tax rate and things like that. But that'll give you an idea as we begin to look at 800 square feet and however many dollars per square foot and that equals, you start to see how significant it is on, on that debt service cost.
I, I would, uh, just on that note, one note of caution would be, it's a little hard to do, an average cost per square foot applied to a single space. Because in some cases, it might be more economical because it doesn't have any partitions.
It's a big open room.
Big open room. On the other hand, if it's a courtroom itself, you know, with all of the technology and finish in the courtroom, it could be more expensive, you know, so just use those with a grain of salt. Maybe it'd be most useful to just to keep going through the various spaces and then circle back and see, see if we have consensus. So the next one maybe is, is perhaps the heart of the function of the courthouse itself, which is, I mean, courtrooms. So the next one maybe is, is perhaps the heart of the function of the courthouse itself, which is, I mean, courtrooms. And what if we're gonna have a second courtroom, what form does it take? And we've tried to, to give some sense of, um, what that second courtroom might be by an option A, B, or C here. Option A being, um, a kind of smaller courtroom that's not jury capable, but the size of that money net out. And then secondly, option D would be a jury capable courtroom with no deliberation suite. So, you know, we can kind of debate the merits of that, but that would be, you know, use it in a pinch and then you have to figure out where the jury goes for deliberation. Um, and then option C would be the full, you know, jury capable with deliberation suite, um, size. And you can see the kind of incremental increase at each one of those steps they have, like 2,300, 2,700, and 3,100 square feet. I think we've already touched on some of the, the implications of one courtroom versus two. And it seems like that, at least from our input from our committee, that having a second courtroom would be pretty important. Thinking about flexibility and future growth. Um, I think it's maybe a little less clear about what form that courtroom should take, whether it's intended to be, you know, jury capable or non-jury capable. Of course, the maximum flexibility would be to make it jury capable and also have a deliberation suite associated with it. So I'll speed it down, um, in looking for a session.
And then, you know, the crystal ball went into the 50-year planning horizon, would you actually make use of that second deliberation room?
That's true.
And that's, those are answers that are just impossible to come up with now. And you're, you're trying to best predict the future, knowing that it might be hard to stick a jury deliberation, deliberation room on the side of the building, it's a part of there.
Back at your Page family comments, what do they have? They have two courtrooms or one?
They have three.
Three?
One for each court?
One for each court? Yes. So, uh, they have the old circuit courtroom, which is in a courthouse like this, it's built by the same builder. Uh, they added to it in the 1950s, uh, the jury deliberation rooms on the back side facing the jail. It also is the jury assembly room. It has separate, uh, entrances. Uh, and it's winged design, the central, looks like this, the central massive and then flanked by what were originally clerk's offices. Now it's general district court on the second level and juvenile court stacked underneath. Ju- the juvenile courtroom is half the size of the, of the general district courtroom.
And, and so that's because you generally, you don't have an audience. The pub, the public doesn't get to come to the court.
It's a different style of court, it's a different style of, and it's, you know, typically with a lot of civil cases, it just involves parties. And, and so it also has a criminal role, uh, but you just don't have juries in juvenile court. That's not the way it works. And it's, it's small, it's intimate, um, and then the district court of above, like I said, twice the size. But that is potentially jury capable and has been used because you just bring in a bunch of chairs. And set them over on one side or the other. Uh, and then they have the old, the old circuit courtroom, which is the biggest of them all. And, uh, it's, you know, like a few stories open all the way. And like I said, jury deliberation room is behind that, and then there's a dedicated jury box. And there's also a prisoner block that's all built into the floor plan.
So the circuit court and the general district court each had deliberation rooms, one of which is also the assembly room for the general district?
Well, the circuit court has the combo deliberation and, 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 um, assembly room. The general district court has waiting rooms that could be used as deliberation rooms as well. And oftentimes, the real function of those rooms is they keep the prisoners in there separate before they come in. So they'll dump them in there and a deputy sits with them. And then they'll take them across the hallway into the general district court for their, whatever their proceedings. Uh, but if you had to have a room for deliberation, you've got one with lots of chairs and a table and all that stuff. And bathrooms in each one of them, that is important. And they also serve as counsel. Sometimes, you know, the lawyers will take over one of those rooms. Give them half consults with their clients and negotiate something, hammer something out.
And that was something in the concepts that came out of this is that you didn't have those, you need to have spaces for, for attorneys to meet with their clients. There, which we don't have here, what's out front in the rain.
Yeah, the benches up front are great.
Yeah, yeah.
And smoking characters.
Uh, and then, um, usually there's a space for attorney to meet with an inmate who's in a holding area, right? And so this interface between the public side and the holding side. And, uh, and then everything else we're gonna talk about, so.
Kier, remind me, Nelson County, I think their juvenile courtroom was nice, it was smaller. But I think we were told the area for the parents had to be a little bit larger than you would think because families would gather.
I think that's right.
Um, so I don't know if we took that into consideration. I really haven't thought about that.
Yeah, the, the fault we've been working on has been that we would have a, um, full-size, uh, multi-use courtroom that would be suitable for both circuit and general district, would be jury capable, have the full suite of spaces for, um, jury deliberation. And then the second courtroom would be smaller, uh, but the well would be sized, um, just like the larger courtroom with jury capable, with a jury deliberation suite. And if you were thinking about these two courtrooms as occupying the same footprint, the reduced size of, of spectator seating in the smaller courtroom would be given over to additional waiting area? Because those sort of volatile situations, they would be able to go into.
I must add on that, um, and juvenile court, there's, especially in Falky, there's lots of people who have protective orders against each other. So you cannot just put them in one waiting room together with the protective orders. You've got to be able to have separate spots for them to wait. So definitely it's true that the courtroom does not need to be as large as a circuit court or a general district court. But then you've got to have a little larger waiting area. And, and also, but juvenile court is confidential, so people can't just sit in the back waiting for their case. They have to wait outside and be allowed in when their case is called. You have to go one at a time. And, and we do, um, usually case-specific docketting, so we'll have a case at nine, a case at 9:30, a case at 10:00. So there aren't so many people, like there would be on the traffic docket or in the circuit court. But you do have to be really careful because there is, you know, significant serious domestic violence and really dangerous situations that you have to plan for. But it could be within a relatively small space. Doesn't have to be a big area, but there's gotta be some way to just not put two people together in the same room.
And many localities have a dedicated J and D R courtroom, right? And so here, we're not talking about three courtrooms.
Correct.
Or, or having a J and D R one and then a general and circuit court, because I think that's probably where we're getting the most conflict on scheduling. And so we would have a, a circuit courtroom, or flexible for anything, and then a courtroom that can do general and J and D R for sure. And then the question is, do you want to also be able to do a full jury trial there?
To me, it makes sense that you would set up the, the two courtrooms sort of in parallel, which is what I think Andrew, you're planning on, you're planning on at least currently, right?
The reduction, the, the difference between the two courtrooms in our current plan is just simply to remove some of the spectator seating, so it becomes smaller, more intimate.
Your honor, do you agree with that also?
You know, I, I don't know that I see the, I don't understand the, the option B. Why, could you sort of set yourself up for an obstacle down the road potentially? I can understand doing a smaller courtroom, um, but again, if you, if it's about looking about as far down to the future as you can and being as flexible as possible, if you had two fully capable rooms, you don't even have to worry about it for a long, long time.
You're worried about building maintenance, not expansion.
Yeah. And, and if, um, you can do two juries, you could have, I mean, district court and juvenile court there at the same, on the same day, the circuit court's not using it, or a circuit and one of the district courts there on the same day. It's just, um, it just maximizes your flexibility.
And we would just make sure we have enough judges available.
We're working on that. We are definitely working on that.
Right now, we've got three general district courts dates a month. And how many circuit court dates? Two usually. And then unless there is a jury trial. So if we had a couple more judges, we could take up.
Those, those Wednesdays and Fridays where.
Three circuit court dates right now, plus two, two overflow, case of urgency break glass, jury trial days. Which we fill those up the next summer, so.
So finding the multiple days together is the problem for the multiple jury?
It is.
Yeah, that's a big problem.
Yeah. Setting a two-day trial is manageable. Setting a three-day or a four-day trial throws a wrench into everything.
Which, which a second courtroom would quickly resolve that issue 100%.
How often does that happen, a three or four day trial?
Every week in Loudon.
But in Rappahannock, how often does that happen?
We've had one, we've had that five, six day trial that.
Yeah.
Mistried at least once.
What happens a lot here is they ask for multi-day trials and we have to be able to accommodate that. They often sell them before they actually go forward, so I can't really say how many we've scheduled over the last eight years. But I know that that's kind of a, a common thing that people are becoming more asked for, you know, for kind of any time. And say, well, we need five days and then we're scrambling for the calendar, even five days.
And they might be using that to get leverage for the negotiation.
Absolutely.
That's right.
Or to have a date pushed way off, you know, that they wanna do.
But, but that's today. And what we don't have any way to really know is how is that influenced by time and the growth of our neighboring communities? We're pretty sure how it's gonna be affected by the growth of our community.
Which is a little bit fuller for your first.
Funny to say.
For more than two days? Three or, three or four?
Yeah, yeah, I'd say at least three, four, five days. Um, and they're usually civil cases, actually, so we talk a lot about our criminal caseload, but we also will jury trials in civil cases. So that's something to consider as, you know, more and more people move out here that have the funds to sue the neighbors and that's what.
Imagine?
Yeah, but it's, it will, it's just a little run.
That's part of the problem we have, it's a problem in Loudon, is people, um, are willing to litigate and they have resources to litigate and they do litigate.
Bad courage.
So, so in terms of, have we put to rest already, you, yeah, you have three courtrooms? That, is that definitely in the overkill category? But, but two jury capable courtrooms?
I think that provides you a lot of flexibility for decades down the road.
And then going back to the first item, not to deep that to others, but just briefly, we had two courtrooms, two jury deliberation rooms, and one jury gathering room of reasonable size. Does that seem like a?
That's the ideal, most flexibility, highest cost, right?
Okay, that was my answer.
Yeah.
I mean, that's the incremental cost of scale and scaling the second courtroom.
Right.
Probably not.
It isn't as much because you're only really saving the smaller jury deliberation room as opposed to the assembly space. Because they have to assemble somewhere and you could say, well, let's assemble in the second courtroom. And if you say that, it'll end up eliminating the benefit of the second courtroom anytime, there's a jury trial.
Correct.
Uh, which today, you know, maybe we could manage that, that'd be okay. But in 50 years, we'd be saying, why didn't Kier Witten make that decision to? By the time this.
Yeah.
You know, and it's a lot.
Look at this, it's $2,000 per square foot.
I already did the calculation, it's about a mile away. I know, I know the fact rate change, it's not, it's significant.
Well, the difference between, oh, sorry, go. It's not just about flexibility. You know, I talk about a lot about the circuit court, but the district court is, I mean, every now and then you'll get a, a need to bring in a special judge for a conflict case or something like that, and it's on the regular docket, you can arguably have juvenile court running both courtrooms or district courtroom. Both courtrooms. It's, it has flexibility for all three courts.
I like that.
We have one prosecutor, but.
You know, civil cases.
Civil, yeah.
The, the civil cases, they're, they're right, they're the ones usually asked for the largest time blocks. I mean, when's the last time we had a three-day jury trial in a civil case was Kavanaugh, right?
Or Kavanaugh, yes, it was Kavanaugh.
Yeah. And that was, um, that ended up going to Falky, jury down there.
And that was COVID stuff.
COVID stuff, and then there was, uh, before that, the only three-day maybe was Randy Smith. And that's been like six years.
He says civil was harsh stuff.
Yeah, I think we do have like a lengthy day, so it's coming here.
Yep, yes, speaking of the prosecutor. Yeah, uh, so the next, the next item for discussion is whether the Commonwealth attorney should be in the courthouse, toward the power. And, you know, this is really a question of, you know, best practice and preference. The conventional thinking at the moment, um, from guidelines and, and general practice is that Commonwealth attorney is within the security perimeter of the courthouse. And is, you know, has easy access to the courtroom and other court office. So that's, that's sort of the default, but it doesn't have to be that way.
Here, again, I was, was thinking, suppose our county triples in population, or let's just use more of those. That there's tripled the number of cases because surrounding jurisdictions have gone up and offenders are coming across the borders into our little Switzerland. So, uh, but it's still here. So it seems to me that the prosecutor function is more stacked. And there's only gonna be so many that the Commonwealth would ever approve. Uh, I can't even get an assistant now, okay, so what's gonna happen there? The, the idea that the Commonwealth has to be in the courtroom is that that takes up a whole lot of space that could be used for the true court function, which is court. There's an office building across the street that's perfectly adequate, has been, and there's plenty of space in, in the future where a separate or add-on Commonwealth attorney's facility, which is a lot less complicated to build and a lot less costly to build than a courthouse. So my word to posterity and to you all is, leave me out of it. Not me personally, but the office, because I think there's adequate space that could be supplied to Commonwealth attorney in the future, who even has a larger staff than I do, at very little cost to future taxpayers, that will free up tremendous amounts of space to be used for actual courtroom stuff, jury deliberation rooms, juvenile courtrooms, waiting areas for juvenile courtrooms, separate ones that are so vitally important to security. Whereas housing me, the big bureaucrat, in that, in, in, in the courtroom itself seems a little bit wasteful at our scale. And, and that's even me thinking, okay, our population triples and the number of offenders triples. So I, I, I just don't see why that that money has to be spent on Commonwealth attorney. I mean, yeah, okay, you want them inside with the security and all that, but, you know, they can shoot you at Quikymark, they can shoot you in your own driveway. They can shoot you, you know?
We've already covered the fact that they, they know you anyway. Everybody knows their.
Uh, so I don't think the security part for Commonwealth attorneys is all that convincing, is what I'm saying, in all seriousness. And so I would think that the amount that 3,300, is that?
And 22, yeah, 2200.
2,200 square feet. That could be put to better use.
What's, what's the square footage of your building current?
Right now, it's about 2,200, if you.
I think that's about right. They came out and surveyed it though. Yeah, we had that. But there are some accessibility challenges to the current building.
Not insurmountable?
I would want to make the upper floor accessible for employees. But you could probably accommodate a wheelchair-bound employee on the first floor in alternate means. We should probably make the first floor accessible, but.
Yeah.
I'm recalling my days as Commonwealth attorney, and if I'm not mistaken, there's a statutory provision that states something to the effect that the Commonwealth attorney shall have a, a right to have space in the courthouse, I believe. And while that might not be.
And while that might not be Art's choice, a successor might want it or require it or insist on it. I'd have to double check the statute, um, but I'm I'm fairly certain that that is, that they have a right to have space in the courthouse.
I would just say as an elected official, I mean, the future Art should elect not to run. Um, that'll that would be an election topic as to whether they want space in the courthouse or not. It's something the voters should consider when entertaining the idea of which candidate to vote for. Having to pay for additional courthouse space would be a happy voting factor not to vote for that individual, I believe.
I would think so.
And I have to say, this this was something I brought up in a spitballing way at the last Board of Supervisors meeting and I'm glad you prefer Art because I have to say, when I look back at some of the decisions that were made by the building committee and the board as we've worked through the previous concepts for the courthouse. We always went with the idea that putting everything under one roof and making it the most secure was the most cost efficient way and and future proof way to plan. In retrospect, I think some of those decisions may have been too far in one direction and and resulted in some project failure. Not complete project failure, but could have contributed to the project failure. So, um, I concur with Art, I think he's got adequate space, I think if there's safety concerns, those aren't insurmountable, if there's ADA concerns, those aren't insurmountable. And, um, there's other spaces on the property should we need to build in the future that we could build a standalone or rehabilitate a space for Art's office or whoever happens to be the office owner.
Whoever's Commonwealth attorney, it just seems to me that, and I know the statute you're referring to, Judge, and and I I am familiar with it, I don't think it requires and I don't know that it's the Commonwealth attorney's election, I think it simply requires the board supervisors to provide adequate office space in the courthouse or such other place. And there's many jurisdictions where it's such other place. Fully work, your own office.
Yep, absolutely. So what a big point here that came up through the building committee work is the board supervisors has said for years that you want staff at leased space, leased space to leave that leased space and move to owned space. Uh, and you wanted the county administration function to give back to town and so that requires space. And this courthouse building and the clerk's building, if they're not in, if it's not an expansion, then those buildings are available for those uses. As would be the Commonwealth attorney's office across the street to potentially be available for one of those uses. So if the Commonwealth attorney, if we keep this building, the proposed new building or expansion smaller, then you might either have to sacrifice the idea of leaving leased space or moving administration or building another building for that. Uh, and those uses, we've heard and I've heard from the judges, are not going to the courthouse, right, shouldn't go to the courthouse, you know, typical county staff. And so when, my message to Glavine Holmes was, when the expansion versus standalone two options are are stood up next to each other, we need to make sure there are apples to apples on availability of space. We're we're freeing up a couple, two, three buildings that are used for something else, then we need to accommodate those of both both columns, if you will, both options.
But we do own, uh, the Commonwealth's administrative space, we own that outright.
Yeah, yes, we do.
The building space that we leased, I just wanted to confirm this for the people at the table, is the zoning administrator's space is what we leased currently, that's quite expensive.
Building zoning.
Yeah.
Uh, and then the corporate extension in that building as well, so we've got corporate extension, building zoning and we don't lease my space, but we'd be looking for new homes potentially for all of those that we aren't paying for and they would go in one of these buildings. And if Commonwealth attorney's office stays at Commonwealth attorney's office, it's not available to be housed one of them, which is fine, just if that's your goal, it has to go somewhere else.
Part of that.
Well, there's already been a lot of jockeying behind scenes for that space, I'm sure other board members have heard pitches from people that would like it too. So I I'll just say, I think that's fine, that and if there's security concerns, we can install an entryway like they did at the school, they buzz folks in or anything like that nature. And I think there will be additional flexible space with the renovation of the church, hopefully the availability of this building.
Not those two, yes.
And let's not forget over by the sheriff's department, we have an empty corner that we no longer need for any kind of
subject.
Subject concerns that we could always build on too, while it's not suitable for courthouse, it's not enough square footage, it would be useful for any number of other reasons.
Sure.
Roger, do you have any concerns about the Commonwealth attorney not being included in the building?
No, I agree with Mr. Golf, I mean, it's it's his choice. There seems to be adequate space over there, it's, uh, it seems to be secure, we don't have to get buzzed in.
All I'm gonna do is press a button, Roger comes around.
The comp board won't give you any extra positions, but your generous locality could.
Could. Art's just so good, he doesn't need any help.
I actually didn't take it in that chair, I'm sorry.
I'm fine, I survived. Good discussion.
Yes.
One, um, just note about the facility guidelines is that one of the recommendations is if the Commonwealth attorney's office is located outside the courtroom or courthouse, that you can still put a field office, you know, touchdown space in the building, so.
You've got at least a room that you can maybe lay over between cases or some.
Hundred twenty square feet, seven twenty-two hundred.
Which is frankly exactly what we did in Leesburg, we had, we were in a standalone building in front of the courthouse and we asked if we could have space inside the courthouse and they gave us some space for victim, um, victim and witness, uh, waiting area to speak with people outside the hallway and.
How much space was that, Judge?
I'm not good at that, it was cut up, it was a couple, it was like a waiting area that maybe was twenty by twenty and it had a little bathroom and then maybe an attached office or two. It was, it was, it was pretty significant space, which is sizable.
Would that be useful? Oh, yeah, I mean, sir, would, I mean, especially when you got, like, especially a domestic victim and and is going to, you know, in the circuit courts, that would be a great.
Would you have kids that you that you wanna sit in there and then?
If they have, they have to do video, closed circuit television and you gotta have space for them to be in the air room with the television and then the intertelevisions in the corner.
Yeah. Excellent. Yes, yeah.
And now we use, it sounds like a downstairs from their office and the wires have to come up the steps and then the.
Yeah, run the.
Run wires through there. We're set up like a little, little living room, kind of an area with a couch and chairs and then an office, office connected.
This is something we've talked about a lot is that rooms like that, flexibility, use use a room for multiple purposes, whether it's a touchdown spot or it's a place for a domestic.
Yeah.
Let's just keep guard access. Work, work great.
So call that like Commonwealth attorney slash flex space or something?
I I think that's probably, that's, I think that that's adequate, um, and again, I agree with all the points that have been made that there is a potential, there are other potential building sites. If in the future, um, a new Commonwealth attorney facility combined with county administration was necessary, uh, so, you know, you've got those those other agencies that also could share the same space, there's no reason to have just a Commonwealth attorney stand alone. And and that's a lot, I would think, I don't know, I'd ask the architects, is that a whole lot cheaper to build a non-court type building that's just a plain old office space building than is to build a courthouse with all the elevators and all the stuff that goes with it, the Masali ports?
That's a waiting building.
Well, I mean, nothing's getting cheap, nothing, but as a general rule, it wouldn't, it is a lot cheaper to build, um, like a, uh, a feed store type, you know, more ability type stadium.
Sure.
It is a building, it's great.
We're not building more.
More courthouse and more.
Yeah, as long as it's not on the grave, but we'll have a beautiful courthouse and right next to it, we'll just have a steel shed. Great idea.
I'm glad the architecture laughed at us.
Play this. Okay, so I I think there was general consensus on the Commonwealth attorney, maybe.
Yeah, as long as that flex, I mean, what the judge was just describing though is quickly approached, well, it's not quite approaching the twenty-two hundred.
It may be a smaller for us than how you've been.
Yeah, just like you need just five or six hundred. Like a whole waiting area, maybe a separate connected small.
Conference room.
Yeah. There'd also be space for him and his speech, all these things to get.
Little kids running around.
Yep. An off, an office sized room.
Yeah, pretty big.
Okay, that's good. All right. Uh, yes, so the next is the circuit court, uh, court, whether that's in the office or whether that's in the courthouse.
I think it'd be less confusing for the public if they were located in the courthouse instead of them having to be given directions, so that they would automatically assume that's where the records room is, as it is in most jurisdictions. I also noticed, I'm trying to find a big section now, that the code requires our record room to be fireproof.
Yeah.
So even if we stayed in our current building, it would need probably an expensive renovation to actually be brought.
Yeah, and I think it's non combustible construction over there, but I imagine there, like many things that have happened here in the past, they've probably took a very, uh, gentle, uh,
Yeah.
Perspective of the part.
Yes, yeah, and then of course, as I mentioned before, record department will leave in the basement level of our office and I would be very happy to see them upgraded and safe.
No, we're talking, we're talking highest per square foot cost to build a courthouse, are there any workarounds where you put records not at courthouse at six hundred or seven hundred dollars square foot?
Well, it it's a, it's a matter of function, right, and so it's a, it's a public record room where public Commonwealth's office records, you know, is part of that suite of court function, yeah.
Okay. It is typical that it's in the courthouse.
Okay, that's right, and and the court, you know, obviously has a very active role during court and having that adjacency is huge.
It would be, I mean, unless I had more staff, I'm I'm still working in our courtrooms, so, you know, there are days that I could be down with employee and have to manage my office and sit in court with the judge at the same time, I I just don't see that being feasible from a separate building outside of the courthouse.
Okay. I think in court too, the current clerk's building is very viable location for building zoning, you know, all of that stuff.
Okay, got it. Do you agree, Christian?
I don't wanna go on the record disagreeing or disagreeing with anything at this time because of previous experience, um, being on the tip of the spear with this project.
I see it from a perspective of, I mean, you have a lot of historic records and documents in there and I think you'd wanna do everything to preserve and maintain it and keep it safe.
Is there a way to drive down this cost per item?
No, I'm.
Is there a way to drive down the cost per square foot if it's just storage space that we're building?
We're talking.
It's not public, it's not public facing space, can it mean nothing?
Well, it is, it is public facing, the problem is.
I mean, but the store there is not.
This is expensive space because it's non combustible, it's fireproof, generally there's a, there's an FM two hundred type, uh, non, non water sprinkler, you know,
Non water.
non water fire suppression system and those things, that's what's jacked, right, so if you truly want to preserve and protect those records from from all terrorists.
Yeah. And something I'd like to add is that the records I'm required to keep forever are all public records, so I have to provide access to them and that access has to be ADA compliant. And so it's not just records locked away in a room that no one, but I have access to. I mean, I actually currently let the public down in our basement into the other rooms to look at the files because it doesn't make sense for us to drag a whole box upstairs to them. And I imagine in the future, you know, we still wouldn't have the staff to run around and do that, so it would be ideal to have a safe public record room that all these records would be stored in, you know, for the future.
Yeah.
And Caitlin, going forward, is it going to be digitized where we won't be adding?
Yes, um, we are currently scanning everything that comes into the office, we haven't moved away from paper files completely. But our case files aren't really what take up the most space in there, it's the old D books and the land records that I'm working with the Library of Virginia to preserve, but I'm still required to keep the paper book even if I have a digital.
They've been like board meeting minutes, need to be in a bound book in the clerk's office.
Exactly. Yes.
And then the other clerk, um, just kind of logged in here a little bit as the general business court clerk and there's a, a reason for them to be in the courthouse as well. There's a, you know, a very active, um, path of travel, you know, from on court days to to.
So exit through the gift shop.
Yeah, exactly. That's true. And then, you know, finally, I just, I don't wanna completely ignore the security side of this as well. I know there's, there's a spectrum and, you know, there's a certain actually personnel cost to having fully staffed, secure, um, entrance way every day. You know, coordinated or not, but even if, even if you wanna think about that as a future, um, possibility, having the the court's staff in the consolidated secure facility is is, you know, best practice.
So we talked today, uh, the secure access area of the courthouse is not manned by sheriff's personnel on non court days.
Right.
Many larger communities have pretty much have court every day, so it becomes a non-issue and it's staffed every day. Uh, but I think regardless of how this all shakes out, you can have that secure access point and not have people screened on certain days if you want and that's a personnel cost thing. And on those other court days, then it is staffed or at some point in time, if there's a safety concern that comes up and the clerks are concerned or then you could, A, have humans in front and screen every day.
Andrew, were you, were you involved with Livingston Nelson County?
I was not.
Probably.
That was wildly rules.
Well, there's many different groups.
There are, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, because I was, I was just thinking about the sort of the modern security entrance and I know that when, uh, W and I went down there, there, there was a W.
Yep.
Um, but it, I'm just trying to think whether or not that's an example of one where be staffed or unstaffed.
Typically, you're going to see an X-ray machine and a, and a metal detector, and we, I had another locality offered to donate their X-ray machine that they were replacing, but. Where you put it.
Like I said, we're in the basement at the church.
Yeah, right. To screen people from the court and so.
It's for storage, I thought you meant.
Yeah, no, no, no. So other stuff, there was, there is still storage, but.
Happens from them.
That's right.
Uh, so, you know, that best practice is to have both of those and so that you, and and that you do not have a public meeting space like this in your courtroom where people are coming and going when it's not screened and leaving someone behind for when court is in session, that's all.
And the people we're dealing with are less and less, I don't know, pleasant people.
Represented.
And they have very little respect for authority of the courts.
That's why we need the chief law coach on.
To me, this is a really important issue, I just, I think all of the clerks should be within the security of the courthouse. Because I think that if people were angry at the government, the courthouse is a place, the court personnel is a place that anger is targeted toward. And we're not gonna be able to provide security in several different, it would be harder to provide security in several different locations, but if all the clerks are within the perimeter and you can just have one security checkpoint for all of the clerk's offices.
And we would definitely have a situation where all the public is entering through one door, whereas today we have our ADA asked to access in the back and the main entrance at the front, so we have people coming and going in different directions, that would, whether it's an expansion or a new building, the public will be funnelled through a door. Uh, and staff might go enter somewhere else, but.
So Andrew, what decision are we gonna make in this regard?
Yes, or, so, so, yeah, I mean, the, um, I don't.
Sounds like you know, seems like a consensus, parks should be able to go. Sounds like you build, seems like a consensus, courts should be able to go, maybe we would support that.
Thank you.
Do you want to say anything about the um, locations of this office near courtroom, so make that clear?
Oh, yeah, I'm especially aware of this, um, where the clerk may be separated from the courtroom, a special fine payment window, and a staff in the court hours, hours may be located against into the courtroom.
Yeah.
I'm a two person office. So the, uh, one of us in the courtroom that leaves one other person, and right now I do have wage monies and thankfully I do have a wage employee that's retired and wants something to do three days a month. And right now she helps us on general district days, which would give us three, but technically with two full time people, that's not an option.
This is part of the challenge, is there's been some discussion of, so, okay, now we've decided all these things go to the building, how do you lay the building out? And uh, and do you have, do you have two courtrooms, or they have two different floors, and the clerks for the respective, you know, circuit courts on one floor with its courtroom, and the general district combined clerk is on the other floor? Or do you have two courtrooms on the same floor and the clerk's on another floor? And so having all that lined out and making it work is Andrew's job.
That's right.
And Anna's a John.
Yeah. It's a geometric problem solving.
But definitely for our locality, we can't have two weeks of presence for our clerks, it's just not by.
Yeah, hopefully one day down the front, long time ground, probably, there, we can get additional personnel.
Great question.
So the next, the next two are highly related, um, because they're both, and you do, both are very, particularly the most lovely with the house. And I wanna say that, first of all, this is somewhat related to site specifications, um, we have a sloping site and it seems like, um, the most logical way to approach this building is to have. Really a full story uh, height at the rear of the courthouse that would be facing that direction. And so however we design this building, it's likely to have the volume down there for a lower story. If you don't choose to utilize it, then it would just be retaining wall and be unexcavated space, right?
So you'd probably fill space, right?
In your, in your spending some money just to build the building up, basically, um, so our advice would be to utilize, utilize that space for something, utilize that volume for something other than just holding dirt. And then, you know, the question is, what do you use it for? And our initial thinking was that you would first of all have, um, you know, mechanical space down there, things that, you know, are, are compatible with being underground or subterranean. And then, and then the next sort of layer of thinking was, um, if we're having, particularly if we have two courtrooms on the same floor, there's a lot of that, you know, there's a lot of reasons to have your prisoner handling be handled through a vertical circulation. Uh, it has to do with not mixing populations, you know, having separate secure quarters, where court staff and judges, prisoner handling and public, you know, you want those things to be separate. And only real, realistically to do that, if you have two courtrooms on the same floor, is to have prisoners coming up between them, basically, that's how you do it. Now, if you have two courtrooms on top of each other, then you can do it a little differently, and you can actually bring, you know, prisoners in from one side, judges in from the other side, public in the other side, so that's a three way diagram. So, um, it, this harkens back to a little bit of our earlier conversation with our committee, was a preference to having two courtrooms on the same floor. And so that, that synchronized with the thinking about prisoners in from below, bringing them up from, from below and then, you know, getting them into the quarters. So, all that to say, um, that was the rationale of one of the approaches that we started.
And I think it's, it's already practically given that this is a two story building, right?
Right.
To fit all these people, it's a two story building, you've got, you've got elevators.
That's right.
So, an elevator running two stories or three stories is amazing.
That's right.
It's an elevator, yeah.
Yeah.
So then, um, then the, the separate questions about the secure parking. And, um, uh, you know, we have conceived the plan to have enough park loop to house the judges underneath the building. Uh, I know there's varying degrees of concern about the security of, um, judges' parking, but it could be handled in a fence, a wall manner exterior to the, to the courthouse as well. Uh, it doesn't have to be below the building, uh, but again, our initial thinking was because we have this sloping site, because we have this sort of walkout basement arrangement and we have the volume to do it, we think in those terms. Of having mechanical space, having the major prisoner handling, handling, sally port functions down there, having secure parking for the judges. So, with that all, um, love to hear other thoughts.
We, it's all about cost.
It's all about self, self preservation.
You raised a really important security question.
But going to the underground, basically, um, it's asking, how much sense of them at any secure perimeter that judges drive.
Secure what? Well, you have to exit the perimeter at some point.
True, true.
Um, but as Andrew was saying, and, and maybe, maybe the cost less at the very least, the bear something to sell. If you're, if the nature of the site means you're building retaining wall and adding a bunch of fill soil to get your level for the first floor, so the front of the building's down, you know, is, is where it needs to be. Um, that's your comparison to excavating and building with the walls.
But in basement space, the cheap space, I mean, why would you not excavate? Why would you just, now then that gives you flex place, flex space too, especially in, in terms of like record retention, at, at the very least. Like, I mean, why would you not, you know, excavate the entire footprint?
Like I say, in my last community, we had a fully excavated basement, had a fourth courtroom that was overflowed. And in the periphery was basically vacant, ready for some future use.
Cause you have the foundation on all four sides, like, or however many sides there are.
That's right, yeah, I mean, I don't wanna, um, pretend that it's not, that, that there is no cost to it, you know, if you were comparing unexcavated space with retaining walls versus excavating it, building the finished space, conditioned space. But what, I guess there's, there's kind of a, a little bit of an iterative question here, is that first of all, what do we want to house in the courthouse, right? So, we know you have to have mechanical space, that's gonna be built somewhere and, you know, having it on that lower level probably be the least costly way to do it. You know, if you're going to have that volume to serve it. Secondly, um, how are you gonna handle the prisoners, you know, and there needs to be space where the prisoners, somewhere they go.
So they're not sitting in the van on the back road.
Right.
In the moment.
Alright, and that, and the most secure way, best practice is to bring the prisoners into an enclosed sally port, roll up a door, bring the van in, roll down the door, they're now in a secure space. Bring them out of the van into prisoner holding, and then, you know, back to my records about how prisoners are actually transported through the building securely. Vertically is the best way to do it if you have courtrooms that are on the same level, so you're coming from the middle. So there's the prisoner question, and then the, the third big piece that we're talking about is the parking, you know, for, for, um, judges and other officers of the court if there's room for them. You know, again, it can be a secure enclosure, it's that exterior, you know, coming to that and moving to the building. Uh, but if you have the room to do it and you have, will do it, you're not gonna have, you know, a lower level, um, you know, completely enclosed is the, is the safest, most secure way to do it.
So the, your, the concepts that I've seen to date are, the rear exposure would be three stories, right? Basement, walkout basement, first floor, second floor. And I think some of the earlier concepts from, uh, from the Wiley Wilson thought, excavate the whole basement and put people in there. And, and have one floor above grade, and there, maybe with some pushback about having an office in the basement. But, you know, uh, or records in the basement. But inmates and parking and mechanical in the basement is, is a different discussion.
Well, I'll, uh, throw my two cents in there for what it's worth, um, I, I think Judge Cuff probably sits in the most volatile court. If you agree, maybe you don't. I, I can say from a, from the perspective of the sally port, um, I'm, I'm, call it back to an example of, uh, when Judge Fleming was in Falkir. And he sentenced a member of the Aryan Brotherhood, uh, to a very significant amount of time. And, uh, when they were transporting him back to the jail, uh, they of course have to walk him outside of the courthouse, van pulls up. There's three or four deputies out there, uh, escorting him to the van to take him two blocks down the street to the jail. And then people that were involved in that case are driving by on the road, making threatening gestures. And of course, this is all on a public sidewalk where anybody could have been walking down, I'm sure they would stop them if they approached, but it's those types of things that make me nervous, um, for deputies, for the public. For prisoners, you know, and, and you, and you don't have to watch the courthouse very long to know how they exit, where they exit, where they're picked up and. Anytime you put inmates on the road, uh, or out in the public on the street, um, you know. I want to, I want to reference the fugitive, but, you know, it, it's, it's a risk, it's, it's a risk and it's, um, I don't know that it's a necessary risk, especially depending on who you're dealing with. Uh, that's my sally port example, as far as the secure parking for judges, again, it's gonna sound selfish coming from, from me or any, any judges, but. You know, and honestly, it's not a lot of the criminal defendants that I'm, I get more concerned about. Again, I'll use Judge Fleming as an example, again, in Falkir, you have surface parking there and it's not secure. It's, it's, it's a, it's a restricted lot and then we have designated spots, but of course, everyone knows where the judge parks. And, um, he was getting into his car and someone approached him from behind, he did not know who it was and was startled, turned around and it turned out it was someone he knew, it was someone that was friendly that was approaching him, but. Years before Judge Parker was approached by a disgruntled, um, domestic relations father, didn't like the way this, I think his custody hearing turned out and, you know. You have a situation like that where, yes, you have to leave the courthouse building at some point, and if they wanna find a way to follow you or track you down, they can probably do it, but why make it easy for you? And what I don't wanna see, and as I, I described this in my dealings with, um, talking to Lou and Falkir about planning for their facilities is, uh, and, and, and. And write orders as far as securing the courthouse facility, who comes in and who goes out and who gets screened. What you don't wanna be is an example, and what you don't wanna be is reactive to something that happened. We've all seen in the Nilo, different instances where the judge up in, in, who's hand caught, or, and, uh, just, you know, we have. There's incidents around and you don't wanna be the example, you don't wanna be reacting to something, you wanna be preventative and take the first step. That's, that's my general thought about it.
And we are a small community and I, I have to just say as just a member of the public that when I see the rapid news photos of people being brought down from regional jail. Uh, and they walk through the back parking lot, the newspapers grab the picture, but I frankly, I find it distasteful, unnecessary, um, but we're kind of stuck with what we have and that it's just the way it is. But I would love to eliminate sort of that, um, public display of, of everyone who is, you know, facing, facing, uh, trial when they haven't been judged yet.
And it's accessible, I mean, to, anybody can walk back there in the, in the parking lot and, um, I think ideally you have detention centers that are connected to the courthouse facility so they, that there's.
Right.
There's no bringing them outside, they have to remain.
Now, here is a lot of inmates are housed in other facilities.
You know, for your life.
The inmates are housed more so in other facilities, regional facilities.
Yeah, and, and you're talking about garage, so when you look at, when you talk about the continuum of how much the square foot space costs, this is, if there's a sally port worked into a basement, that's a pretty cheap space. As you would be, you know, in a.
I think what Donna said definitely resonates as people were, like, a lot more unhappy than they've ever been locally, I think, we all have seen that. So, you can imagine being a judge, um, dealing with unhappy families, yeah, on a regular basis, I think that would, your parking in your society there, I think is extremely important.
I, I can tell you just, even, like, nothing happened, but I mean, I can tell you an example from today. We had the doc up this morning and, um, we had an inmate that was on bond this afternoon, I set a secure bond, um, for her. And the deputies took her over to be processed at the jail and while she was waiting there for her bondsman, she's got, how many family members, million around outside, maybe, uh, six or eight of them. And I sat in here, I didn't work for a little while, but at some point I had to be, I walked out and they're all in the parking lot, nothing happened.
Right.
Very well could have. That was, mind was a little frightened of the situation sometimes, yeah, so, but it, you know, it's a really good example of what my, my.
And I, I just wanna agree that secure parking is very important, I would agree with Debbie though, it depends on what the cost is. I mean, if it's talking, talking about like ten percent of the cost of the building, there might be some point that it's just undoable to do underground parking. Um, and then we might have to look at some other secure parking options. To me, the prisoner sally port is probably priority number one, making sure that's.
And, and that was included in all of the concepts from the last cycle, I think that's a good, we've got to do that, whether it's under the building or somewhere, it's that, I think, that's a given.
And then secure parking is also very important, it's gotta be done, but whether it's underground or not underground, I think that's gonna depend on, I mean, yes, if we can have it underground at a reasonable cost, not that much more, we should absolutely do that, it would be so much safer. But if, if the cost is just prohibitive, then, then I think we'll have to look at other options. And, and, you know, some of the questions that we've been talking about tonight is, well, how often does that happen in our community? And I, I've definitely gotten threats, and I know Judge Foster's had a threat, I don't know about the other judges, but it happens, you know, on a relatively frequent basis that someone, um, says, I want to kill the judge, you know? Or sends a letter in saying, um, you know, something's scary, so it's not, this isn't one of those, it might happen fifty years from now, this is, it happens all the time, it's happened to, I think, all of us in our judicial careers. There are people who are gonna be making threats and, and I will tell you that once you get the threat, then everybody perks up and they will pay a lot of attention for a while.
Yeah.
Right? Um, but then if something bad happens and we all kind of settle back down a little bit, um, so definitely just getting ahead of it and not allowing it to happen in the first place is right.
Andrew, not to get too into the weeds, but you're talking about giving the judges security through parking in effectively the same space that you have prisoner sally port, how are those two segregated?
Yeah, there's a couple ways to do it, one is that they're not the same space, right, so you have, you actually have two different portions of the basement, in which the sally port for the prisoners, that's all over here. They'll get separate entrances for the judges.
Entering from separate directions.
Yeah. Okay, we have done it before, all, that, in, in, um, in one case where you, you actually have a single door for both, but you drive through the judges parking into a separate sally port, so there's like two doors. You know, and once you're in there, shuts, then you're in the prisoner area.
So it's exactly what we have in Leesburg, you, you come in and the judges parking is all on here and the van will pull in, pull into another garage right here, the door closes, and then that's the holding area.
Both are, both are viable, we, in our early concept, they, we actually had separate entrances because we could arrange that on the site, it's probably better. Okay.
So those were the, those were the identified major issues, with the stakeholder room here, were there any other bigger items?
What do you need from us tonight?
So I'd like to just review the items one by one, and, and just see if we're, if we have a consensus, because, you know, our, our next step is basically to, um, validate the diner that we've already done, which by the way, have all that's built into them. And then we're looking forward to, um, for the real floor plan and the renovations and things like that that are gonna make this more real, and then uphold until we. We didn't uphold until we got these big rocks, so. So question number one was about jury assembly. And it seemed like that, you know, the maximum flexibility option is currently the concept. Two courtrooms, two jury deliberation suites and a separate jury assembly space. The alternative would be to take one of those jury deliberation rooms, make it into an oversized jury deliberation room. The consequence of that would be to halve the possibility of having two jury assemblies at the same time.
Yeah, I think that undermines the whole purpose of having two jury configured courtrooms. Because if you don't have a deliberation room that you can use in both cases, then you're taking away that flexibility.
Well, yeah, to be clear, we have two jury deliberation suites. One of them would be oversized to be jury assembly. What you could not do in this case would be to have two jury trials happening on the same day where you're calling two different jury boards. So that would be the going factor.
Then, right, if you have a deliberation going on in the large one, then you can't have an assembly.
That's right.
They got a room or something. And I think there are ways probably that that jury assembly room could serve some of the flexible things that we were talking about for the parent-child, you might be able to find ways to multipurpose that room.
It wasn't how there during the assembly room, it was actually our law locker. So we kept the chairs in there, but it was also available for research.
And yours is in the basement, your office?
Uh, we don't need to go there. Just have them assembled right.
No, I mean, you're, you're the law lawyer.
Oh, our law, it's actually the record system.
Okay. Okay, the law shop.
Yeah.
So it seems like a consensus that we're keeping the jury assembly room in front of you. The second question was about the second courtroom. I think we already talked about that. We would have two jury capable courtrooms.
Yeah.
But it sounded like it may make sense to have one of the smaller so that there could be more room for the gathering.
Like the waiting room.
The larger, the one that would be earmarked for today. Comm례 attorney is
Thank you very much.
In the basement. Comm례 attorneys in the basement. That's right.
Be like around.
Send out the shell out back.
So it sounded like we reduce the in courthouse comm례 attorney space to just be some kind of waiting room and associated office slash courthouse space for meetings.
It sounds like multi-use, so we have to, I mean, I know we're not to that, but making sure that we think we're all of the flexible, like you were all talking about doing the video recording and stuff. So just making sure it's adequate for all the
Technology wise.
Contemplative purposes.
Yeah, okay. So this item I just want to point is a change in the program that we've been working in. So your main house is somewhere else and then we have a touchdown space.
I think that's a wash, I love it. Because if the need works down it's a whole lot cheaper, it's a whole lot more, not going to take up all four half acres of backyard that we own. So, and there's other spots that could be purchased, the bills, habitant type buildings that don't have all the suspense.
Quontet.
Quontet.
With a flush.
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. It seemed like the consensus as far as clerks are in the courthouse.
Yes.
And then
With one point of preference.
One point of preference.
For each.
And then finally, then we are going to design around lower level accommodations for judges' parking and Sally Court. With the caveat that as we get into design development and the cost delivered, that would be the place to look at the spaces.
On one of the arrangements, there was a separate office for county attorney. And I think, I don't know if that was just a misprint that was supposed to be comm례 attorney.
I think it was supposed to be comm례 attorney.
Well, yeah, so, but I don't think there's any need at all to have a separate county attorney office inside of the courthouse.
Correct.
That, you know, on most counties that are smart, hire outside casters. So most of they are, they're housing themselves.
In my last round, you did that. Why you see that?
Art of the art of thought is on.
Both of them I said, both roles to you all. So it doesn't possibly need to be.
I think it's just, yeah, mislabeling is a result of your dual role. So, yeah. So that's, that's all we have. I think, I think that's it.
Great meeting. I did want to find out if there was any inclination seeking. I, I think everyone knows it's no secret that I've always fought the addition to the courthouse. I thought we passed that last too long ago. And I was, Mr. Lee brought it up at the last board supervisors meeting, but I still think it's really not a fruitful idea to pursue the addition to this courthouse. And seeing as how we have the court personnel in the room with us tonight, how would an addition versus new construction impact you all and your ability to do your jobs?
Okay. Yeah, why do we have to be relocated temporarily?
And I know, I mean, when the building committee originally looked at this idea and weighed very heavily the ideas of an addition versus new construction, one of the compelling aspects that's geared us repeatedly toward new construction was the backlog and the challenges of getting our caseloads into other jurisdictions while we're waiting for this case to become available again. Is that still an ongoing concern?
Absolutely, yeah. I mean, we couldn't, Falkir could accommodate us during COVID when we wanted to have jury trials over there. And I imagine they'd pick back up full force just like we have, so they're probably even less able to accommodate us over there. I imagine they're busy here now or several years ago.
And you can't expect them to make room for us and their clerks offices. And then you've got a security issue. Falkir Assurance Department was not provided security for Rappanen County courts. Should they be expected to? And Rappanen doesn't have the staff to do that.
I mean, to me, I couldn't support the idea of fleshing out an addition to this courthouse. And I still can't do that. And I just wonder if any of the other board members are ready to walk away from that idea. And also since you're here and not to put you on the spot service, what's the, what's the cost difference in an addition versus new construction? And what should be our expectations as a board in terms of the cost of the buildings?
I think, actually, I think the question before that question is, in terms of your internal process for coming back to us the next time, what, let's just, for argument's sake, I'm not arguing with you, but for general
Educating. I appreciate that.
Thank you. So let's, let's just say that we still have these two concepts out there. For your planning purposes for a get together like this, should we do it again? How much, how much time, energy and resources would be pulled into how to do sort of planning on parallel tracks?
Well, so our charge at the moment is to be agnostic about the, the two options. To pursue them as, as closely as possible, apples to apples comparison for the program. And you are asked to solve for the courthouse in either scenario.
Is it agnosticism free in this case?
No. No. Part of their, part of their work is an implementation plan of how in the world could you do an addition and still have court and clerks and, and that's, there's costs. Some locations just put a nail shopping center, right? Well, we don't have a whole shopping center. As Smith said, the building community came very quickly to the conclusion, it's not by them. But many members of the public felt that the board shouldn't dismiss it. And, and for that reason, the scope that the board approved was developed to, to drive both of those to ground and come up with a compelling case that it is or is not viable and it is or is not more expensive. And so what is the cost to do that and is it worth it? And, you know, they've done a bunch of work on both scenarios so far. And if we, we board decided we're just not going to do the addition anymore, then that could be refocused effort into, you know.
Something else.
Something else.
Yeah, I think, I think the, in terms of the cost question, I, I can't answer that one specifically beyond the construction part of it. I'm not sure where that's going to fall. Because, you know, you do have some space that is currently built that we would be repurposing. On the other hand, it's going to cost money to repurpose it, right? So that's probably your wash.
And it's an opportunity because you don't have space to move your least
That's right.
Offices into anymore.
So there's that, but there's also the swing space question, right? So that the cost to the county for relocating the clerk and the court's functions is not going to be there if we do the new build, right? So that's, that's some cost that you can recover in either case.
Yeah, I mean, I, Christine, in my, basically, you know, the position I staked out, which was I heard from many people and I appreciate Mr. Luke's recent comments, which but I did hear from a lot of people who are of the mindset, why do we need a bunch of new stuff in Rappanen County? Mr. Hurley is sitting back here, I think I was talking to him in a brief interview and I said, I was, I still wasn't sure that we needed to abandon our existing courthouse and perhaps we could repurpose it. And I concede where we're likely headed based on this discussion. That said, I feel that I shouldn't be, and I'm not putting this on you, but I'm just saying, I, I don't, I would not, I would not feel good about walking away from something because I made a commitment to my, my own constituents who are very vocal in this regard that we had recently due diligence, which is why I'm asking the question about the, the cost of agnosticism in this case. And it seems like in relatively short order, we will get to a fork in the road and we will, we will take one fork or the other. But I think we've come this far, so let's get to that fork. Because I, in my case, owe that to my constituents.
And we are close to that.
That's right, yeah. Really, we were, we were on track to deliver that in January. You may be a little bit passive, but I did look off the, to some of these questions, but, yeah, we're talking weeks.
Okay, because that was my question. You know, if we were going to play pretend and we said, you know what, we're going to abandon the addition idea. What did that hit us in terms of time? You know, time and what has already been spent, so you're weeks.
You're not going to save any time by asking that because even if we, if you said that's off the table, we still got to do the concept of the new build. So we're set up south wise to the decision.
I want to circle back to what, what they used says to the press, said abandon this courtroom for this building for, you meant for court purposes. This building will always be here and will continue to be used for some fucking in the future.
Despite not being
Don't like that stuff again. This building is going to be.
Thank you, Gary W. Purdy, Jr. P. U. I'm just a politician who speaks properly.
I can see that.
No, I mean
Keith Winston says to
No, don't give us a joke, man. Like, don't tee it off.
It's Christmas.
Anyway, no, the building, the building's an awesome building. The building's going to stay here.
Yes.
But I do feel like we owe it to people to at least demonstrate that we went through the process. We understood the costs and opportunity costs and real costs and, and reached into a fully informed decision. And I didn't like being forced into one path the last time without being able to ask questions in this regard. And so now we're, we're going to get the answers hopefully.
And, and if, if what we think will happen, it should be a very easy decision for the community and the board to make. But we've got to run the numbers.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I could go around and do town halls, which I really think we need to do once we're close to knowing what we're going. It's very good to be able to say we went through this process and we did look at every angle. And this is how we came up with it. It gets easier to sell the, the end game
Quontet.
when we're done, the whole thing.
So is there anything else that you need from us? Have you gotten enough?
We've accomplished our goal for the evening.
The one thing that I did want to say just briefly, I haven't said much, is that the one thing that I'm concerned with is the folks that do do this administration of justice do need to be safe and I, I hear them. And I know it costs money, but we need to do this. And so I just want to say thank you to all of you for being here tonight to do this. Because this has been a long process that Mr. Luke mentioned to me has been going on since the 1970s. As a current conversation that we're talking about tonight. Thank you.
I really appreciate the involvement of all of you because you're going to help us not make some bad decisions. But it could have happened because we don't know your jobs as well as you, obviously. But thank you for your engagement and your continued engagement on a Thursday night, a week from, or less than a week from the holiday.
And when are, so when are we airing that and what will we hear?
Well, you will hear at the next board meeting, something.
Yeah. I can't remember if we have a date on the calendar yet or not. I think it was kind of a, get through this and then figure out, you know.
Everything's been paused to validate this program.
Okay, and one thing
I think, I think we said like two, two to three weeks, but we're at the holidays now, so
January, probably.
Towards the end of January.
And I would be remiss if I didn't say that, and I've mentioned this to Gary, obviously, this is an extremely significant project for Rappanen County. And we trust you and we trust you to take this seriously. And to that end, I fully expect to the maximum extent possible, in-person meetings and communication. If we're talking $10 million or $15 million, if we need to pay a little extra to not have you on the Zoom call, I think it's important and I think the productivity of this gathering demonstrates that in-person meetings on something of this magnitude for our community must continue.
Okay.
So to the extent possible, I'd really like to stay away from Zoom calls. It just, it seems like a mismatch given the gravity of what we're trying to discuss and decide.
And there's a few decision points along the way and there's a purposeful public interaction in our scope.
So I think for the key ones, it makes a lot of sense if it's just a, here's the monthly update where we are for a board meeting.
I can accept that, but I think tonight just reminded me how good it is to just sit down and speak with you guys directly. Thank you. I'll move over to Adrian.
Second.
You have a motion in a second. Any discussion? A little bit of J. I.
Hi. Thanks for coming up.
Thank you, Hannah.